19th, 2025 will now come to order. In compliance with the Open Meeting Act, a current copy of this act is posted in this meeting room. Madam Clerk, would you please call roll?
Bulkeley.
Here.
Alarcone.
Here.
Barr.
Here.
Heimer.
Here.
Tabalonsky.
Here.
Lopez.
Here.
Palinski.
Here.
Roth.
Here.
Schilling.
Here.
Mayor Bulkeley, the roll has been called.
Thank you. Mr. Council President.
Our Father, thank you for the opportunity to serve our fellow citizens. Please give us the wisdom and guidance to make the proper decisions entrusted to this governmental body. May our conduct show respect, honor, and courtesy to each other, as well as to all our citizens. Amen.
(Music)
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Does that run Schilling?
No. Good evening. I welcome everyone to tonight's council meeting, and I must begin with a great shout-out and thank you to a Columbus resident by the name of Jim Davis, who lent us and gave permission to use his rendition of the Star Spangled Banner. All right, we will move on with, let me back up. Anyone during tonight's council meeting, if they have anything to speak to the council about items on the agenda, we'd ask that you please come forward. We'd ask that you give your name, your address, and limit any comments to five minutes or less. With that, we'll move on to the consent agenda.
Item four, consent agenda. The following items will be considered routine by the city council and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a city council member or citizen requests, in which event the item will be removed from consent status and considered in its normal sequence on the agenda. Item 4A, minutes of the March, or excuse me, of the May 5th, city council meeting. Item 4B, minutes of the May 13th, city civil service commission meeting certifying Marta Vias Pennington as a police officer candidate. Item 4C, reappointment of Steve Anderson, Robin Cutser, Melissa Gott, Colleen Bray, and Josh Mueller to the planning commission for three-year terms. Item 4D, reappointment of Adam Yurkowski and Ron Schilling. Council of officials and Charlie Barr, board of directors to the Northeast Nebraska Economic Development District for one-year terms. Item 4E, bid from Dale R. Johnson Enterprises Incorporated Doing Businesses Johnson Trucking of Columbus for one-year supply of gravel in the amount of $31.25 per cubic yard if delivered, or $24.75 per cubic yard if picked up. Item 4F, resolution number R25-74, authorizing payment of various improvement projects. Item 4G, finance department reports. And item 4H, payroll and bills on file. Mr. Mayor and council members, is there anything you would like removed from consent?
Mr. Mayor, I move that the items on the consent agenda be approved as presented.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by aye; those opposed, nay. Brings us up to proclamations. I do have two proclamations this evening I'm going to read. Both are very brief, but I think they're both very important to our community. The first, I was able to deliver to a community group on Friday that honor our law enforcement people here in Columbus with Respect for Law Week. This proclamation, whereas the crime rate in our community, which I do not totally agree with this, this was a boilerplate proclamation that said communities all over are having crime rates raised. We are very fortunate in Columbus that that's not the case, but bear with me. The crime rate in our community, as well as neighboring communities, continues to rise every day. And whereas the problems of crime touch and affect all segments of our society and can erode the moral and economic strengths of our communities, and whereas our vitality as a community and as a society depends to a great degree on the willingness of each individual member to give his or her time and talents in volunteer service, and whereas the citizens of Columbus, Nebraska have indicated a desire to join the Optimists Columbus and Optimists International in expressing their appreciation, encouragement, and support of programs aimed at combating crime and encouraging a respect for law. Now therefore, I, James B. Bulkeley, Mayor of the City of Columbus, do hereby proclaim the week of May 18th, 2025, as Respect for Law Week, and ask all citizens of Columbus to join the Optimists in carrying forth this message. I think we are very blessed with the law enforcement group that we have here in Columbus, and I think we want to all thank them when you see them and realize how fortunate we are. My second proclamation kind of goes towards some of those that work within the city and do many things that go often unrecognized. It's those aspects of our services that need to happen every day, but sometimes just don't get the recognition they need. Whereas public work services provided in our community are an integral part of our citizens' everyday lives. And whereas the support of an understanding and informed citizenry is vital to the efficient operation of public work systems and programs, such as water, sewer, streets, and highways, public buildings, and solid waste collection. And whereas the quality of effectiveness of these facilities, as well as their planning, design, and construction, are vitally dependent upon the efforts and skills of the public work professionals. And whereas the efficiency of the qualified and dedicated personnel who staff public works departments is materially influenced by the people's attitude and understanding of the importance of the work they perform. Now therefore, I, James B. Bulkeley, Mayor of the City of Columbus, do hereby recognize the week of May 18th, 2025, as National Public Works Week in the City of Columbus, and call upon all citizens and civic organizations to acquaint themselves with the work and services which our public work staff provides, and to recognize the contributions which our staff and officials make every day in bringing and providing safe, efficient, and quality public services. Mr. Sliva, to you and your group, thank you very much. All right, that brings us up to public hearings.
Item 7A, public hearing application from Janil E. Caleb LLC Doing Businesses Tuyo Emio for retail Class I liquor license at 1267 26th Avenue, and Daniel Betacourt Romero as the manager.
All right, with you standing up there, I'll ask if anybody's here to speak for this public hearing.
Daniel Betacorte Romero. 2422 6TH.
Why don't you come up and stand next to him and be with him, please?
2422 63, Columbus, Nebraska.
Okay. And you are going to be the owner and operator of this facility?
Yeah, he's the owner.
Okay. Anyone have any questions?
That piece of property was previously another bar that had a lot of issues. They were not very good neighbors. There was a lot of trash. Hopefully you guys will do a better job than they did with the project.
Yeah, he's gonna do the best, he's gonna keep it clean.
Perfect.
He's gonna be better than the other one.
That'd be great, thank you.
Thank you very much. Any other questions? All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Is there anyone here to speak against this public hearing? All right, entertain closing the public hearing.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to close the public hearing. All those in favor signify by aye; those opposed, nay.
You're going.
Well, you might wait. Wait a minute. Just one more, you got one more item to talk about. One more step to go through. It's city government, you got one more step to go through.
Somebody needs to make the move.
Somebody make a motion.
I'd recommend a recommendation be made to the Nebraska Liquor Control Commission to approve the application of Janil Caleb LLC for a retail liquor license, retail Class I liquor license, and Daniel Betancourt Romero as manager.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by aye; those opposed, nay. Okay, now you can. Now you're good, okay?
Item 7B, public hearing, authorization of purchase of real property located south of 12th Street between 33rd and 34th Avenues from the Nebraska Department of Transportation.
Is there anyone here to speak against this public hearing? Is there anyone here to speak for this public hearing?
Mr. Mayor, move public hearing to be closed. Second.
We have a motion and a second to close the public hearing. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by aye; those opposed, nay. Motion passes. Number nine, we move on to report of city offices.
Item nine A is an update on the Nebraska Department of Transportation 23rd Street Reconstruction Project by city engineer Rick Bogus.
So, they are on schedule. The rain, I'm sure, is gonna delay them a little bit, but because of how it's set up and what's open, it won't probably delay them a long period of time. But they're still working on the water and storm sewer like they have been the last several weeks. They're working their way from east to west. They're at the, past the 26th Avenue intersection now. Once that 26th Avenue gets open temporarily, that'll be the last closures until paving for 23rd and 26th Avenue. They're working towards 30th Avenue, so there'll be a series of closures there for 30th Avenue. But we're starting to do the pavement preparation, so everything is still generally on schedule as planned.
Okay, any questions for Mr. Bogus? Thank you in regard to that.
9B is an update on NDOT's Loop River Bridge project.
So, as you know, this one's just starting, but they have now moved traffic to the north side, so you're on one lane on the northbound bridge, on the east bridge, North Brown Bridge. They are breaking up the concrete and sawing some concrete on the trust bridge that's going to be removed, so they can get ready to remove that. I believe, starting today, they actually closed the trail. I don't know, but the rain might have delayed them, but they're supposed to close the trail today under, that goes underneath that bridge, so they can grab that concrete for it to be safe. And in that interim period of a couple of weeks, the trail will be moved to the underpass, and so the trail used will actually be under the underpass, it'll always be open at some point. But then in mid-June, the underpass will close, and so the trail will move back to underneath the bridge, but the underpass will close for reconstruction of half of the underpass that's scheduled. That was scheduled to be done by August 1st. They're all trying to get this stuff done by August 1st, grab some more concrete off of the bridge until August 1st, because at that point, because environmental purposes, they're allowed to more get into the river, and they'll start a series of blasts on the bridge like we talked about before. That'll probably be August for sure, and maybe in the September to end up taking down that trust bridge. They'll then, after that, they'll remove that trust bridge, build their temporary bridge, and just keep going. The plan, the general plan is to have the new bridge up and running in, I think it was spring of 2027, so you'll stay on that one way, one lane on the northbound east bridge until about that time period, and then you'll flip over to the new bridge, doing one lane each direction as they patch the North Brown Bridge. So, again, it just started, so they are on schedule.
Rick, that underpass, will that just be reinforced or completely redone?
No, reconstructed on the west half, because the east half was done, you know, prior when they widened it, so it's just the west half of the underpass.
It'll be closed completely?
Yes, it'll be closed completely, right.
Okay. All the graffiti gonna stay, or?
We're in discussions.
Rick, what is the, and I know it's included, but I've heard different people talking and saying, there's different stories of what's gonna happen with the steel from the bridge, and then having a model built somewhere else. I mean, just explain, please, to the public, what is happening with some of the steel and what's going on?
Sure, because that trust bridge is historic, but when they did the, when they evaluated the trust bridge, there wasn't any piece of it that were even allowed to be used as anything, you know, off to the side. We're not even allowed to do it, it's by contract. And so there will be a model of the bridge in the park, as far as section 106 goes. It's not going to be a true exact replica, but it'll be something very similar to it. And then there'll be some boards that explains the history of that bridge, maybe history of just transportation across the river in Columbus in general. That will, that's, actually, the design of that's coming up later on in this meeting today, and then the theory would be over the next year, so that would be built.
And that's all part of this whole project?
It's all part of the project, it's a requirement because the historic trust bridge part.
That was probably the more important part I was trying to get to. Any other questions for Mr. Bogus? All right, seeing none, thank you very much. Moving on to reports of council committees.
Item 10A, committee of the whole, from May 19th, 2025. Item 10A1, request from Legacy Youth Foundation to use a portion of the Pawnee Park Memorial Stadium parking lot for a drive-in movie theater. The committee recommends approval.
Mr. Mayor, move for, to adopt this report. Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt this committee report. Any discussion? I think for the public, it would be great to just comment that this legacy group is a combination of young people from our high schools, all three of our high schools, that have come together to have a plan, and to put plans together for things that can make Columbus a better place and help draw people their age back to the community. They came up with this drive-in theater as one of their really key events and items they wanted to work on, and this is the culmination of about two years or better worth of legwork that they've done. They've done fundraising, they've done idea-making, I mean, they've put this whole package together on their own. So kudos to these young kids for doing this for our, for our community. I think it's great. I think everybody that sat in on this presentation were impressed with these young people. You know, we always talk about our kids. Well, there's a great example of some of the better ones. Well, some of the good. So, yeah. All right, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by aye; those opposed, nay. Motion passes.
Item 10A2, amend city code, sections 133.03 through 133.05 regarding fireworks discharge dates, just discharge times, and sale dates. The committee recommends to amend, to amend city code and discharge dates of June 28th through July 2nd, 8:00 a.m. to 11:00 p.m., and July 3rd and 4th from 8:00 a.m. to midnight, and no December fireworks with an effective date of August 1st, 2025. Also, the sale dates of June 28th through July 4th from 8:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m.
Move this committee report be adopted?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt this committee report. Any discussion? I think for the public, it would be great to just comment that this legacy group is a combination of young people from our high schools, all three of our high schools, that have come together to have a plan, and to put plans together for things that can make Columbus a better place and help draw people their age back to the community. They came up with this drive-in theater as one of their really key events and items they wanted to work on, and this is the culmination of about two years or better worth of legwork that they've done. They've done, they've done fundraising, they've done idea-making, I mean, they've put this whole package together on their own. So kudos to these young kids for doing this for our, for our community. I think it's great. I think everybody that sat in on this presentation were impressed with these young people. You know, we always talk about our kids. Well, there's a great example of some of the better ones. Well, some of the good. So, yeah. All right, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by aye; those opposed, nay. Motion passes.
Item 10A2, amend city code, sections 133.03 through 133.05 regarding fireworks discharge dates, just discharge times, and sale dates. The committee recommends to amend, to amend city code and discharge dates of June 28th through July 2nd, 8:00 a.m. to 11:00 p.m., and July 3rd and 4th from 8:00 a.m. to midnight, and no December fireworks with an effective date of August 1st, 2025. Also, the sale dates of June 28th through July 4th from 8:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m.
Move this committee report be adopted?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt this committee report. Any discussion? Any discussion? You're welcome if you have something you'd like to say, if anybody would like to comment, this is the time. Please. You got voted up to do it, Jason.
I guess. I'll talk to you again. Jason Teely, 4230 West Raymond Road, Raymond, Nebraska, representing Crazy Cracker Fireworks or Teely Fireworks. I spoke earlier of the impact we've had on our community, the efforts to build our business, supporting celebration of fireworks, families coming together. I think there's a lot of focus on illegal fireworks, people breaking laws. I want to keep this simple. I don't know what we're trying to accomplish here. You're gonna shorten the sale dates, we're gonna remove fireworks in December. What is that going to change? You've all agreed it's an unenforceable policy. So ruining it for everybody, that's where we're at. A few people that we can't ticket, we can't cite. I reviewed all 54 police complaints in the last three years. Twenty of them were out of the season. Out of 54, we had seven verbal warnings. That's it. That's all we did. So what changes when we change to selling on the 25th? And you can't shoot on December 31st. So it's the law-abiding citizens that now don't do it. Everybody else just continues on. So I guess, and I'm sure I'm not here to ask questions, I would love to hear your thoughts on that.
Well, I think what we have here, Jason, is a compromise, not a great compromise, but I think if we keep getting pushed on this thing, we might put this to a ballot of all the citizens of the city and let them vote you in or out.
I would welcome that.
Yeah, well, I don't know, you might not speak too quickly about that, but for all the, all the people that contacted me, they don't want it. And I think this is a compromise that I think you have to live with in the city of Columbus. So I-
What would you like to see happen, Rich?
I don't want any fire. I just have, would like to have the public's displays and be done with it. I know it's your business, but I just don't think those hours where they just go off on and on and on and on, you know, that's just upsetting, and everybody I've talked to tells me that. So I think this is a compromise. You should be happy with it. If you're not, then maybe we take it to a vote of the people, and then you can see what would happen. I, that's, that's where I'm at. So, I mean, you might laugh about it.
I'm not laughing.
Yeah, well, I'm just telling you what people tell me. And I'm elected to keep the city safe.
Yeah, and you would like to see fireworks banned in the city of Columbus?
I would like to see the public displays, and that's it.
Does that represent the views of the council?
I'm not speaking for the council.
No, I'm curious.
But that's not what we're talking about. We're talking, we're telling you, this is a compromise. Accept it, move on.
You ask about the views of the council, it would be relative to what the committee of the whole shared at the la, you know, which was the earlier meeting. I believe it was a seven to one vote.
Right. Rich voted no against that.
Right, but I, so the view, I mean, but if you're asking, I mean, the council's vote was seven to one for the compromise that was put forward.
Yes. And Rich would, you would like to see more, is why you voted no?
I would like to see less.
You would like to see more enforcement?
Yeah, no, I'd like to see-
More restriction.
Yeah, I'd like to have it just to the public displays and move on. If that's the true celebration we're talking about, instead of just people purchasing stuff to blow off to see if they can outdo their neighbors, it doesn't make any sense.
Is there a plan on how to enforce these rules?
Well, the police do the best they can. And, you know, you've got to catch them, lighten them, and that's why they're not enforceable. Plain and simple. I don't know how much clearer we can make this, and I know it's the illegal ones that make the loudest noise, but when they, they just go on and on and on and on.
Right, the people that are breaking the law, not the families.
Well, there are families that break the law. They shoot after hours. In my neighborhood, they do.
Thank you.
Hello, Jeff Peabody, 409 Fifth Street. I'm with Columbus High School. The band runs a fireworks tent that is typically at Hy-Vee, and I was pretty happy to see such a compromise. We don't do a ton of business in those first three days, but we do have to staff that tent 24/7, and so it seemed like, hey, as long as a weekend continues to be included, that was an important part. We do a fair amount of fundraising off of this fireworks tent, and a lot of that happens when there is a weekend that is involved, and when, and then, of course, when the third and the fourth, second, third, and fourth come around. And so leaving, just taking the three days off, but leaving that first weekend in, I was very much in favor of, just as someone who raises money for the band, and this is our biggest fundraiser for sure, it did not cut our legs out from under us completely. It just took three days off that were generally not very well. We didn't sell a lot in that timeframe anyways, so just wanted you to be aware.
Now, do you, do you realize, though, the way the calendar works, there may be a Fourth of July without a weekend?
That's true. In fact, this year, the Fourth of July is on a Friday, but we're gonna open on a Saturday before that. And so if we have seven days, then there's gonna be at least one weekend involved somewhere. So I would, it would be a challenge if it went less than that, but what you're proposing right now still works very well for us.
Okay. Any other comments? Yes, ma'am?
Sarah Abler with Fly By Night Fireworks, 1000 Woodcrest Street, Norfolk, Nebraska. I really want to stay with the 10 days because I'm grateful, well, if you have two weekends in your sales period, that's awesome. And I agree, the first couple of days are slow, except if there's two weekends, but I appreciate those slow days because imagine setting up a whole store, like in a day or two, and then being open for business. There's always things you have to work through with the computer, the scanners, the internet, phone lines, there's a lot that goes into it. So I want the extra days. I don't care if they're slow, because it takes a while for my staff to know where stuff is. We move it around. So I understand you have to be there 24/7. Trust me, I've spent more nights in a tent than I would care to admit. When you say, and then when we have to change it, like I said, the ads, the flyers, the signs you guys required several years ago, all that needs to be changed, and that costs money. But you say, Rich, I believe your name is, you've heard from a lot of people, can you give me a number on how many is a lot?
Once again, I'm an elected official. These are my people in my district that have talked to me, two or three, and I think that speaks to the deal. I got nobody that says, speaks to your side emailed, so I guess I have to listen to that side before I listen to your side.
Okay.
You know, we're charged here in the city to protect the city's safety, and that's first and foremost.
Were you a child who enjoyed fireworks or as a parent?
You didn't just hear my explanation, I had-
I know, yours, okay.
I got-
So you have one or two people calling. You know what? We'll start a phone campaign, and all the people who are in favor can start calling you, because it's usually only the few that have a problem.
Make sure they live in the city.
I will.
Okay, okay, okay. Okay, okay. Let's, let's calm down here. Let's, let's get some decorum.
Okay.
I think that's the right word.
I apologize.
I don't know.
Okay, so we have had, because of a few individuals in Norfolk, they seem to bring it up every couple of years, and so there's a poll that goes out in the Norfolk Daily News. I only have the one, but both times it says, "How long should fireworks be allowed, July 4th?" And 10.8% said July 4th only, 24.2% said three days, 20% said a week, and 39% said 10 days. And the previous poll that was done like two years prior to that reflected like the same numbers. So there's an overwhelming amount of people that want to- So there's an overwhelming amount of people that want to keep it the way it is, and they enjoy it with their kids, with their grandkids, neighborhood parties. I understand there comes a point in time when you don't enjoy that. We do a lot in our community. We support the animal shelter, our churches, baseball teams, softball teams, and we even do shows for residents at nursing homes and assisted living. They love it, and they look forward to it. And we had to do it at nine o'clock in twilight, and it wasn't, like I said, it wasn't as great as, they would have all stayed up late. And there's people like, hey, thanks for doing that. Let me know next year, and I'll give you some money so we can do some more.
And that was just one day? That wasn't 10 days of that show, was it?
No, it was just one night. You can't afford to do it every night.
Well, that's the problem. You know, one night is one night, and that's what I've said. A celebration of the Fourth of July should be one night, and that should be it. And so, you know, if you're saying the people in the nursing home enjoyed it for one night, I think the citizens of Columbus should enjoy it on one night.
But what if you have to work on the Fourth? Or you do shift work, you have this weekend off, but not that weekend? So you pick your weekend, you get to celebrate.
All right. Any other comments?
Can't remember if there's anything else.
I would tell, I would tell you this. I mean, this has been brought to the council through the process that we have as citizens, all of you, all of us. A desire to look at this and make a change was brought forth by citizens, and councilmen, councilwomen. And so, you know, what I see happening here tonight is that there's a compromise being made. If after a year or two, it's not any good, the process is there. You mentioned, bring it forth and fill the room. Bring a, I mean, it can be done. I mean, Rich said this has gotten talked about forever and ever, and it kept getting kicked down the road, the can. So it, my point is, it can be discussed. Nothing in this room is forever.
Right. But usually when something's taken away, it's hard to get it back.
Well, I'm just.
But mayor, may I respectfully ask a question? I don't, okay, so this meeting that we just had at 5:00 or 5:30, that was the first reading? And now this is the second reading?
No. The committee as a whole was a committee that brought it forth to the council meeting.
So this is the first reading?
This is the first reading.
And the second reading will be?
It's in two weeks, and the third reading is in two more weeks, so six weeks. Or did you?
It's actually the first Monday of the month and the third, oh, first Monday of the month and the third Monday, or third Monday of the month in June. So those would be the second and third readings.
Okay, I was just confused by that previously.
Yeah, it's a process. So tonight's first reading, and then first Monday in June, second, third Monday in June. Those are the three readings.
Okay, great.
And then what they talked about was an August 1st effective date. So this would not affect this year's Fourth of July discharge or sales. It would be in effect for next year.
Okay.
If passed.
Okay. Thank you for the clarification.
You're welcome.
So that meeting would be like a 6:00 start meeting on the first and third?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Any other discussion? Any other comments? Seeing none, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by aye, those opposed nay. Motion passes. Brings us up to new business.
Item 13A, application from Arbak Enterprises LLC for preliminary plat of Reader's Second Subdivision. This is on Fourth Street and Seventh Avenue. The planning commission recommends approval.
Mr. Mayor, move the preliminary plat of Reader's Second Subdivision be approved?
We have a motion and a second to approve the preliminary plat of Reader's Second Subdivision. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by aye, those opposed nay. Motion passes.
Item 13, item 13B, application from Knights of Columbus for a special designated liquor license at 26th Avenue between 13th and 14th Streets for Columbus Days.
Mr. Mayor, move for the approval of the application from the Knights of Columbus for special designated liquor license be approved?
Have a motion and a second to approve this application for a special designated liquor license. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by aye, those opposed nay. Motion passes.
Item 13C, application from Barrel House for a special designated liquor license at 2311 14th Street for a fundraiser.
Mr. Mayor, move for the application of Barrel House for a special designated liquor license be approved?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the application from Barrel House for a special designated liquor license. Any discussion?
Yes, I have a question. What is a Pickle Fest?
Well, if you buy tickets, you can go find out. But we have somebody here.
Well, do we have a representative to explain that?
We have the Pickle Fest, the Pickle Fest queen is coming forward.
I don't know about that.
Oh, come on.
I'm sure I wore my green pants. Um, I'm from Southfield, 7805 63rd Ave, Columbus, here to represent Barrel House and Columbus in Action to talk about Pickle Fest. It's our first-ever Pickle Fest here in Columbus. We've got like 10,000 people interested on Facebook. We're expecting a huge turnout, hoping for a huge turnout. We've got over 40 food vendor, food craft, variety of vendors, t-shirts, hats, anything pickle, and not everything is pickle. So if you don't like pickles, there's still going to be good stuff for you, too. Live music all day, pickleball tournament, but we want to close the street similar to how we did when we did the street dance in front of Barrel House in between us and the police department, and then additionally close the alley like we did for Taste of Columbus. It worked really well. It was really cool. The weather also cooperated, so we're crossing our fingers for that for this event. But yeah, it's just going to be something fun, all ages, fundraiser for Columbus in Action. We've got the theater project ball rolling slowly, but it's going. So some of the money will go towards that and our efforts to revive the theater and other things around town.
And just to give you a little more momentum, what are the dates and times of this event?
So it is June 14th. The vendors are set up 11 to 8, unless they sell out early. We told them they could leave. The pickleball tournament is in the mornings, that's 8:30 a.m., and that should get over around noon. The live music is scheduled throughout. We've got Polka, we've got Dr. Ernst, we've got a DJ and a band called Picklegrass. So it's a variety of entertainment, trying to make everybody happy, but it's impossible.
Good luck with that one. Good luck with that one.
Yeah.
So June 14th?
June 14th.
And that is a?
It's a Saturday.
Saturday, June 14th?
Yep. If it goes well, it's Father's Day weekend, but maybe next year it'll be a two-day event. We'll see, we'll see what response we get. We're taking a gamble on the pickles.
Councilman Roth, they will have a pickle eating contest that you might want to join in.
Those are sweet.
There you go.
And Councilman Roth, you might get yourself signed up for the pickleball tournament.
Do you have a super senior group that's going?
So we're not, we're not separating it by ages, so you might, you know, not responsible for anything broken.
I played pickleball this morning, and I had a 13-year-old kid as a partner for one of my matches.
So you need that as your teammate.
And he moves.
He moves.
Thank you.
Yes.
Any other questions for Nicole? Thank you very much. All right, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by aye, those opposed nay. Motion passes.
Item 13D, application from Half Full Incorporated Doing Business as Infusion Brewery Company for a special designated liquor license at 2311 14th Street for a fundraiser.
Mr. Mayor, move the application be approved for Half Full Inc. for a special designated liquor license.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the application from Half Full Inc. for a special designated liquor license. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by aye, those opposed nay. You got off easy, Nicole. You got stuck with everything. Motion passes.
Item 13E, appointment of Lynn Fear as police chief.
Council members, with your permission, the mayor wishes to submit the name of Lynn Al Fear for appointment as chief of police per council rules. The two-week waiting period is waived for appointment of a police chief. The Civil Service Commission unanimously certified Mr. Fear at their April 28, 2025 meeting. Mr. Fear has over 30 years of experience in law enforcement, including a decade in senior administrative roles. He's a passionate about building and maintaining strong relationships within the community by embracing the 21st century policing strategies and promoting collaboration, transparent communication, and accountability. He looks forward to leading the Columbus Police Department in an era of progressive, transparent, and community-focused policing while delivering the highest quality of service to the residents of Columbus. Mr. Fear has earned a master's degree in business management and leadership, a bachelor degree in organizational leadership, an associate's degree in criminal justice, and is a graduate of Northwestern School of Police Staff and Command. He's the former chief of police of Lamar, Colorado, and has held the position of commander in operations in both Sterling, Colorado, and Cedar Rapids, Iowa. He was recognized by the U.S. Department of Justice for innovative law enforcement strategies and honored with the prestigious Enrique Kiki Camarina Award for exemplary leadership. I would entertain a motion for Mr. Fear's appointment.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by aye, those opposed nay. Our new police chief is with us this evening. Al, would you please come forward?
Hello, good evening. First of all, I want to say thank you for voting yes, because this would have made my time up here very awkward.
You wouldn't have had time up there.
Well, I'm very excited to be here. I wanted to publicly thank some people if I could. Mr. Mayor, thank you very much. The city administrator, Tara, has been fantastic. This process has been very smooth and seamless. I want to thank Chief Share for his time here at the Columbus Police Department for everything he's done over his career. It's basically made this a turnkey operation for me to walk in as a new chief of police. I couldn't be more excited. June 2 cannot come quick enough for me. My wife and I have been in town all weekend, just checking out the various restaurants and meeting the people, and my dog's a huge fan at the dog park, I have to say. Fantastic. Some great people have shown up there to meet us. I'm looking forward to meeting as many people as possible in the next few weeks. I'll be back here next Monday for the Memorial Day service and meeting as many people as I can in the interim. So I want to thank the interim chief, Brett Strecker, the sergeant in the police department, who's done a phenomenal job as the interim chief. I know he likes a lot of public attention. So anyway, he's already agreed to talk to the media for me once we're done here today. But anyway, I want to thank him for everything he's done, being very transparent and open with me in communications and help me have some insight on what's going on in the police department right now. But thank you all for allowing me to be here, and I can't wait for what the future holds for us.
Welcome.
Thank you.
All right, we go on. I'm sorry, that's yours.
Item 13F, appointment of Andreas Velazquez as a police officer.
Council members, with your permission, the mayor wishes to submit the name of Andreas Vel, Vel? Velazquez, thank you, for conditional appointment as police officer. Subject to a successful completion of all tests and training, the Civil Service Commission certified this candidate at their January 21, 25 meeting. Per council rules, the two-week waiting period for the appointment of police officer is waived. Mr. Velazquez is a resident of Wakeville, Nebraska, attended Wakefield Community High School. He graduated Northeast Community College with the Associate's Degree in Criminal Justice, Law Enforcement, Health, and Public Service. He is currently employed as a correctional officer at the Thurston County Sheriff's Office in Pender, Nebraska. Mr. Velazquez will attend the Nebraska Law Enforcement Training Center and participate in the Columbus Police Department's field training program. This is a budgeted item. Council members, do I have a motion for this appointment?
So moved. Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by aye, those opposed nay. Motion passes. And Andreas is with us this evening also. Please come forward and introduce yourself.
Good evening, everybody. I'd first like to thank everybody that is here today. I'm not going to lie, I'm kind of nervous.
Relax, relax.
Brett Strecker and Tammy, thank you for making it seamless, too. It's been a phenomenal process with you guys, and I can't wait to serve here at Columbus. Thank you for the hospitality that I've received throughout the process. Thank you to my family and my friends that made it here today. Can't wait to get out there. Thank you.
I was going to tell you, welcoming, it's so great to see you brought your family and friends with you, and it just shows the support that you have. That's wonderful. Welcoming, congratulations. All right, and that's enough about Brett Strecker now. Let's get to the rest, okay?
Item, item 13G, quote from Husker Auto Group, and the amount of $36,950 for pickup for the wastewater treatment plant. This is CIP number 25-56.
Mr. Mayor, move that the quote from Husker Auto Group for pickup be accepted?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve this purchase. Any discussion? Councilman?
Just a question. Do we really, I understand this was their best bid, but do we need a four-door pickup to haul water around?
The reason for the extended cab or the four-door, which is priced about the same, is the sampling equipment and the samples, they have to stay in a warm temperature in the winter transporting them. You know, you don't have room for them otherwise, so that's kind of what it is. And we've kind of went that route because, you know, some of the equipment stuff, it's just not to be, good to be out in the cold and stuff. These samples are the same way.
Okay. Just curious.
Good question. All right, any other questions? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by aye, those opposed nay. Motion passes.
Item 13H, plans, specifications, and estimate of cost in the amount of $850,000 and authorization to advertise for bids for lift station number 15. This is the Westbrook Lift Station relocation project. Plans and specs are on file in the engineering department. This is CIP number 20-93.
Don't everybody jump at once?
Mr. Mayor, move the plans, specifications, estimation of cost, authorization to advertise for bids for lift station number 15. Reallocation be approved?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve plans and authorization to advertise for bid for lift station number 15. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by aye, those opposed nay. Motion passes.
Item 13I, comments from the mayor and city council members and compliance with the Open Meetings Act, no discussion may be held on this item.
Any council member comments? Yes, Mr. Jablonsky?
Hopefully, everybody who's driven downtown and have noticed the new sculptures that have been placed out and around. I think the BID district is, Business Improvement District, is really moving forward on trying to make Columbus a really neat place to live, and the flower pots are really, really neat. And the Central Community College is in charge of making sure they get watered. But I think they just need to, you know, they started out a little rocky, but I think, I think they're making some progress with making downtown a great place for people.
Those kids from the college probably get a day off tomorrow with what we got yesterday and today.
Some older guy in a four-wheel deal with a water tank comes around.
Any other comments? I have nothing to add this evening. We'll move on to resolutions.
Item 14A, resolution number R25-75, amending the bylaws of the Columbus Board of Airport Commissioners. The Board of Airport Commissioners recommends approval.
Mr. Mayor, I move resolution number R25-75 be adopted.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt resolution number R25-75. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by aye, those opposed nay. Motion passes.
Item 14B, resolution number R25-76, accepting the deed of dedication for JLO subdivision Howard Boulevard and 50th Avenue. The planning commission recommends approval.
Mr. Mayor, move for the adoption of resolution R25-76?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt resolution number R25-76. Any discussion? Seeing none. Seeing none, all those in favor signify by aye, those opposed nay. Motion passes.
Item fourteen C, resolution number R-two-five-dash-seven-seven, withdrawing from the One Library Consortium in a inter-local agreement.
Mr. Mayor, move that resolution number R-two-five-dash-seven-seven be adopted? Second.
Have a motion and a second to adopt resolution number R-two-five-dash-seven-seven. Any discussion?
Uh, why, why are we withdrawing?
Jerry, would you please?
Sorry. Would you come forward and give an explanation, please?
Sure. The reason why we're drawing is because the inter-local gre- inter-local agreement controls what kind of software we use for our checking and checking out, and the software that the current consortium is using is outdated and pricey, and the new consortium that we're, you can work on with the resolution, the next resolution, um, is four thousand dollars cheaper than the current one, and it's better situated for a public library. The previous one we used was originally designed for academic libraries, and it just is not functional.
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Thanks for the explanation.
Any other comments or discussion? Seeing none, we have a motion and a second to approve. All those in favor signify by aye, those opposed nay. Motion passes.
Item fourteen D, resolution number R-two-five-dash-seven-eight, approving the Pioneer Consortium Joint Entity Agreement.
Mr. Chairman, I move the resolution number R-twenty-five-dash-seventy-eight be adopted?
I'd be the mayor, but who wants to second that?
Well, you're kind of the, uh, never mind, never mind. Mr. Mayor, excuse me.
We need a second.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve resolution R-two-five-dash-seven-eight. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by aye, those opposed nay. Motion passes.
Item fourteen E, resolution number R-two-five-dash-seven-nine, approving the agreement with Legacy Youth Foundation to use, to use a portion of Pawnee Park Memorial Stadium for a drive-in movie theater.
Mr. Mayor, I move resolution number R-two-five-dash-seven-nine be adopted? Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt resolution number R-two-five-dash-seven-nine. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by aye, those opposed nay. Motion passes. Brings us up to ordinances on their first reading.
Item fifteen A, ordinance number two-five-dash-oh-eight, to amend city code sections one-hundred-and-thirty-three-point-oh-three through one-hundred-and-thirty-three-point-oh-five regarding firework discharge dates and end times, firework sale dates, and to update the required signage at all sale locations to coincide with these changes.
This is the first reading?
Yep.
So there'll be no, there'll be no vote, or unless anyone has any comments, there would be no vote. All right. That brings us to meeting adjourned.